...people should have to, but should not expend the proud day for us. Columbus Day, all the change in the city, Hasbro Jones and me to amend the resolution to change the date from Columbus Day to August 9th, which is the day these relationships that's a great day that's a 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 day[378.22]
For multifamily funding programs for the development known as Carnegie Tower at Fairback. File number seven seventy-eight twenty nineteen from the Regional Vice President of Penrose LLC. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Cedar redevelopment Phase Three. File number seven seventy-nine twenty nineteen from Erin Greenblatt. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Longfellow School. File number seven eighty twenty nineteen from Division of Treasury. Statement of cash management and investment policy. File, uh, plat- sorry. File number eight hundred twenty nineteen dedication of plat for Orville Avenue Extension. File number seven eighty-one twenty nineteen oath of office for Brian Besserer, Captain of Fire. File number seven eighty-two twenty nineteen oath of office for Robert Kennedy DeSanto, Lieutenant of Fire. File number seven eighty-three twenty nineteen oath of office for Matthew Holian, Lieutenant of Fire. File number seven eighty-four twenty nineteen oath of office for Joseph Allen Konis, Lieutenant of Fire. File number seven eighty-five twenty nineteen oath of office for Raymond Andrew Marata, Captain of Fire. File number seven eighty-six twenty nineteen oath of office for Kenneth Maurice Robertson, Lieutenant of Fire. File number seven eighty-seven twenty nineteen oath of office for Stanley Anthony Stone III, Captain of Fire. File number seven eighty-eight twenty nineteen oath of office for Michael Dunst, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven eighty-nine twenty nineteen oath of office for John Farnsworth, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety twenty nineteen oath of office for Kevin Kincaid Jr., Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-one twenty nineteen tim- uh, oath of office for Timothy Moffo Judd, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-two twenty nineteen oath of office for Mark Magath, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-three twenty nineteen oath of office for Xena Martinez, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-four twenty nineteen oath of office for Heather Mishky, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-five twenty nineteen oath of office for Jen- Jennifer O'Shea, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-six twenty nineteen oath of office for Sean Smith, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-seven twenty nineteen oath of office for Ronald Weber, Lieutenant of Police. File number seven ninety-eight twenty nineteen oath of office for Samuel, Samuel DeVito Jr., Captain of Fire. File number seven ninety-nine twenty nineteen oath of office for David Gation, Police Review Board Member. File number eight oh one twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of license application at ten fifty East Ninth Street Ward Three. File number eight oh two twenty nineteen regarding a new license application at ten fifty East Ninth Street Ward Three. File number eight oh three twenty nineteen transfer of ownership application at three twenty-three Prospect Avenue Ward Three. File number eight oh four twenty nineteen regarding economic development transfer application at forty-six oh one Payne Avenue Ward Seven. File number eight oh five twenty nineteen transfer of ownership application at one- at seven seventy-nine dash eighty-three East one hundred and eighty-fifth Street Ward Eight. File number eight oh six twenty nineteen regarding a stock application at seventy-four oh one dash oh five Central Avenue Ward Five. File number eight oh seven twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of ownership application at one forty-two oh six Lorraine Avenue Ward Sixteen. File number eight oh eight twenty nineteen regarding a stock application at two thirty-four Euclid Avenue Ward Three. File number twenty, I'm sorry, file number eight oh nine twenty nineteen liquor agency contract application at twenty-seven forty-seven Cedar Avenue Ward Five. File number eight ten twenty nineteen regarding a new license application at forty-six oh one Payne Avenue Ward Seven. File number eight eleven twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of license application at one sixteen nineteen Lorraine Avenue Ward Eleven. File number eight twelve twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of ownership application at twelve eighty-seven East Fifty-Fifth Street Ward Ten. File number eight thirteen twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of location application at thirty-one seventy East Ninety-first Street. File number eight fourteen twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of license application at fifty-nine ten Detroit Avenue Ward Fifteen. File number eight fifteen twenty nineteen regarding a new license application at forty-one thirty-three Lorraine Avenue Ward Three. File number eight sixteen twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of ownership application at twelve eighty-three East Seventeenth Street Ward Three. File number eight seventeen twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of ownership application at nineteen thirty East Seventy-ninth Street Ward Seven. File number eight eighteen twenty nineteen regarding a transfer of ownership application at twenty-one thirty-six West Ninety-eighth Street Ward Fifteen. File number eight nineteen twenty nineteen regarding an economic development transfer at twenty-six sixty-one dash sixty-nine West Fourteenth Street Ward Three.
Condolence resolutions.
Resolutions of condolences by Councilmember Brancatelli for James Worrall, by Councilmember Brancatelli for Ben S. Stefanski II, by Councilmember Cleveland for Freedom Mosby, by Councilmember Conwell for Devon Brown, by Councilmember Conwell for Thelma Henri Adams, by Councilmember Hairston for Carmella Jean Fair, by Councilmember Hairston for Ernest Winston Jr., by Councilmember Bashir Jones for Annie Murrow, by Councilmember Bashir Jones for Mary J. Blasingale, by Councilmember Joseph Jones by, uh, for Ally B. Bennett, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Billy J. Tanton, by Councilmember Joe Jones for William Edward Johnson, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Larry Wilson, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Cleola Luckett, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Quandale T. Johnson, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Margaret Miller, by Councilmember Casey for Mike Belton Sr., by Councilmember Kelly, by Janetta Turn- Turner Camp, by Councilmember Kelly for Joseph Ford Smith, by Councilmember Kelly for Michael Thom- uh, Thomas George, for Councilmember Polencic for Linda D. Feiger, by Councilmember Polencic for Richard Delise McKean.
Are there any other condolences? Councilman Zohn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to ask the clerk to hold out a number for a great American, somebody who fought World War Two just recently passed away, Joseph Sardelli. Joseph Sardelli.
So noted. Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other condolences? Will councilmembers please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Congratulatory resolutions?
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Brancatelli for William Whitney, by Councilmember Cleveland for Mildred Whittaker Little, by Councilmember Griffin for Wi- for the Williams family reunion, by Councilmember Bashir Jones for Reverend Timothy H. Blake Jr., by Councilmember Joe Jones for Hansi Solomon for the Ford Rice family reunion, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Elsie Turner on her eightieth birthday, by Councilmember Kane for Jacob Tintin- Tintelnot, by Councilmember Kane for Gabriel Ortiz, by Councilmember McCormack for Ohio City Pizzeria, by Councilmember Polencic for Duncan McKenzie Frasier, by Councilmember Polencic for Marshall Shorts, by Councilmember Polencic for Michael Troopah, by Councilmember Polencic for Saint Jerome Catholic Church on their one-hundredth anniversary, by Councilmember Summum for Luton High, Yale, Paul Ryan, Yow. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Bishop for the triumph, triumph the church and kingdom of God in Christ, by Councilmember Conwell for Bone Thugs-N-Harmony on their twenty-fifth anniversary, by Councilmember Conwell from Make Music Cleveland, by Councilmember Conwell for Cleveland Cultural Gardens Federation One World Day twenty nineteen, by Councilmember Griffin for Richard Peary, by Councilmember Casey for Horizon Education Center at the Triscuit Station, by Councilmember Casey for William Tony Parker, by Councilmember Zohn for Jasmine Santana. Uh, resolutions of appreciation by Councilmember Branc- Brancatelli for Patricia Nyamba, by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly for Rob Curry, by Councilmembers Conwell and Griffin for Tom Joyner, by Councilmember Hairston for Bonnie Van Sickle, by Councilmember Hairston for Annie Sue, Annie Sue Thomas. Resolutions of commemoration for Councilmember Brady, I'm sorry, by Councilmember Brady for Yoshiko Ikuta, Ikuta, by Councilmember Joe Jones for Henry Stademeyer Sr.
First reading, emergency ordinances to be referred for administrative and committee review.
Ordinance eight fifty-six twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Aging to apply for and accept one or more grants from Western Reserve Area on Agency for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one Western Reserve Agency Area on Aging, including Supportive Services and Aging Disability Resource Center. Ordinance eight sixty twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Griffin, Conwell, Johnson, and Brancatelli by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue one or more permits to University Circle to encor- uh, encroach into the public right-of-way at various locations in University Circle. Ordinance eight sixty-one twenty nineteen by Councilmembers McCormack, Johnson, and Brancatelli by departmental request to vacate a portion on of East Sixth Street. Ordinance eight sixty-four twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Griffin, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, approving the addition of certain property to Northeast Ohio Advanced Energy District. Ordinance eight sixty-five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Casey, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into an amendment with BD, with BPDC building to forgive the balance of the loan payments. Ordinance eight sixty-six twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Conwell, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into an amendment with Cleveland Citywide Development Corp. for additional funds relating to the build-out of the retail incubator space. Ordinance eight sixty-seven twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with Jennings Freeway Industrial Park for its design need to fund eligible project debt relating to the Strike Force Project located at forty-seven eighty-one Hinckley Industrial Parkway. Ordinance eight sixty-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request to amend section one seventy-eight oh three oh five oh six and oh seven of the codified ordinances as amended relating to the deposit and investment of city funds. Ordinance eight sixty-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director Finance to enter into an am- uh, into an amendment with Webtech Wireless relating to the Automated Vehicle Locator System. Ordinance eight seventy twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director Finance to enter into one or more contracts with automatic data product processing for the professional services necessary to acquire one or more licenses for an integrated payroll and human resources information system. Ordinance eight seventy-one twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request to amend sections six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty-one of ordinance three twenty-three fifteen relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance eight seventy-two twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Human Resources to exercise a second option to renew a contract with the Fideli Group to analyze healthcare providers' benefits and claims. Ordinance eight seventy-three twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Human Resources to employ one or more professional consultants for the administration of Family and Medical Leave Act benefits for city employees. Ordinance eight seventy-four twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to exercise a second option to renew a contract with Airports Council International to provide customer service satisfaction surveys, data collection, reporting, and benchmarking for the Department of Port Control. Ordinance eight seventy-five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to exercise first option to renew a contract with CHA Consulting to provide for the use and occupancy of certain space located on the second floor of the Pas- Passenger Terminal, Terminal Building at Burke Lakefront Airport. Ordinance eight seventy-six twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to enter into a lease agreement with Ultimate Jet Charters for the lease of certain space located in the Passenger Terminal Building at Burke Lakefront Airport. Ordinance eight seventy-seven twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to employ one or more professional consultants to provide pavement management services on an as-needed basis. Ordinance eight seventy-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor and materials necessary for painting and paint removal on run- on roadways, runways, and other paved services for the Department of Port Control. Ordinance eight seventy-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Zohn and Kelly by departmental request to amend section one thirty-five forty-seven of the codified ordinances relating to emergency medical service clinical agreements. Ordinance eight eighty twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Zohn and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from Cleveland Police Foundation to conduct a two-year gunfire sensor technology pilot program in the Fourth District. Ordinance eight eighty-one twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Zohn and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Safety to donate a vintage former police boat known as Jack F. Delaney to the Cleveland Police Museum. Ordinance eight eighty-two twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Zohn and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of turnout gear for the Division of Fire, Department of Public Safety, for a term of one year with one year option to renew. Ordinance eight eighty-three twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more agreements with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District concerning local sewer cleaning and material disposal at the Old Dennison Road and Beltline Sewer Areas. Ordinance eight eighty-four twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter, and enter into one or more agreements with Dome Brook Watership Partnership and the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District concerning the replacement of trash rack, of the trash rack on Dome Brook upstream from MLK Junior Drive. Ordinance eight eighty-five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more agreements with Cleveland Metropolitan Park District to replace up to two water mains within their Whiskey Island Connector Trail. Ordinance eight eighty-six twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts for labor and materials necessary to remove and replace legacy lighting and to install LED lights and fixtures on city bridges and Wyland Whale mural park on North Marginal Road. Ordinance eight eighty-seven twenty nineteen by Councilmembers McCormack, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to apply for and accept one or more grants or gifts from the state of Ohio, federal entities, or any public or private entity for the design, construction, and maintenance of Canal Basin Park. Ordinance eight eighty-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Kane, Johnson, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to lease certain property located at one forty-five fifty Lorraine Avenue from Beth Hannah for the purpose of providing a base of operations for services provided in the northwest section of the city. Ordinance eight eighty-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Conwell, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to lease certain properties located at seventy-three forty-five Broadway Avenue and six eighty East One Thirteenth Street from Cleveland Metropolitan School District. Ordinance eight ninety twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Conwell, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to enter into a property adoption agreement with the Finch Group or its designee to maintain a new city park located at the Glenville Circle North Development. Ordinance eight ninety-one twenty nineteen by Councilmembers McCormack, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, uh, authorizing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to sell a portion of city-owned property no longer needed for public use located in the area of Columbus Road to the Sherwin-Williams Company. Ordinance eight ninety-two twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Johnson and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of waste collection and recycling carts for the Division of Waste Collection. Ordinance nine hundred dash twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly, designating Buckner Avenue between State Road and West Forty-first Street with a secondary and honorary designation of Honey Hut Ice Cream Way. Ordinance nine oh one twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into one or more contracts with Engineered Arresting Systems Corporation for professional services necessary to inspect, maintain, and repair three engineered material arresting systems at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport. Ordinance nine oh two twenty nineteen by Councilmember Griffin to amend sections six oh seven oh two and oh three of the codified ordinances uh, and enacting new section six oh seven eighteen, lowering the penalties for marijuana offenses.
First reading, ordinances to be referred for administrative and committee review.
Ordinance eight fifty-four twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Johnson and Griffin, changing the use, height, and area districts of parcels of land south of Woodhill Avenue between East Ninetieth and MLK, as well as adding an urban form overlay along major corridors of Shaker Boulevard, Buckeye Road, and Wood- and Woodhill Road.
First reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance eight twenty twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly, authorizing clerk of council to enter into a first amendment to the agreement with Guy Gaddamsky to extend the term of the agreement with Cleveland City Council. Ordinance eight twenty-one twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly, authorizing clerk of council to enter into a first ame- amendment to an agreement with OnTech, with OnTechnology Partners and to certify the money for the continuation of services under the agreement. Ordinance eight twenty-two twenty nineteen by Councilmember Kelly, authorizing clerk of council to enter into agreement with Saint Martin de Porres High School Work Study Program to participate as a sponsor for students for work-study positions with Cleveland City Council. Ordinance eight twenty-three twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Joe Jones, Bishop, McCormack, Johnson, Cleveland, Griffin, Bashir Jones, Polencic, Conwell, Hairston, Brady, Santana, Zohn, and Casey, authorizing Director of Department of Public Works to enter into agreement with Brick City Productions or its fiscal agent for the Grandparents Education and Resource Fair Family Day through the use of wards one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen casino revenue funds. Ordinance eight twenty-four twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Joe Jones, Bishop, Johnson, Cleveland, and Griffin, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Mount Pleasant Now for the Family Unity in the Park Community Health Expo and Education Fair through the use of wards one, two, four, five, six, and six casino revenue funds. Ordinance eight twenty-five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Johnson, Bashir Jones, Polencic, Conwell, and Hairston, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Famico's Foundation for the Holiday Food Gift Car Program through the use of wards four, seven, eight, nine, and ten, excuse me, casino revenue funds. Ordinance eight twenty-six twenty nineteen by Councilmember Griffin, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Burtonville Car for the Buckeye Summer Soul Series Project through the use of Ward Six Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance eight twenty-seven twenty nineteen by Councilmember Griffin, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation for the Healthy Community Engagement Program through the use of Ward Six Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance eight twenty-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmember Polencic, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Greater Collinwood Development Corporation for the Collinwood Observer Project through, through the use of Ward Eight Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance eight twenty-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmember Santana, authorizing Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement with Cleveland Animal Protective League for the Trap Neuter Return Program through the use of Ward Fourteen Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance eight thirty twenty nineteen by Councilmember Santana, authorizing Director of Department of Economic Development to enter into agreement with Tac Holding Company for the Tremont Animal Clinic Expansion Program through the use of Ward Fourteen Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance eight thirty-one twenty nineteen by Councilmember Zohn, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Bike Cle- with Bike Cleveland for the Vision Zero Educational Workshop through the use of Ward Fifteen Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance eight thirty-two twenty nineteen by Councilmember Bashir Jones, authorizing and directing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Ward Seven Brighter Day Community Festival Committee to stretch four banners at East Fifty-Fifth and Superior, Ansel and Superior, Seventy-Ninth and Huff, Eighty-Ninth and Huff, for a period June twenty-fifth to August twenty-fourth for the brighter day, for the twenty nineteen Brighter Day in Ward Seven Community Festival. Ordinance eight thirty-three twenty nineteen by Councilmember Conwell, authorizing and directing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Neighbor-to-Neighbor Community Group to stretch two banners at East One Fifteenth and Wade Park and East One Hundred Eighth and Wade Park, publicizing the community heritage, heritage street festival. Ordinance eight thirty-four twenty nineteen by Councilmember Bishop, authorizing the issuance of a mobile permit to Ruel Sailor and the comma club to engage in mobile vending in Ward Two. Ordinance eight thirty-five twenty nineteen by Councilmember McCormack, consenting and approving the issuance of a permit for the annual Fox Eight Foxtrot event on August twenty-fifth twenty nineteen. Ordinance eight thirty-six twenty nineteen by Councilmember McCormack, consenting and approving the issuance of a permit for the OROC event on August third twenty nineteen. Ordinance eight fifty-five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Aging to apply for and accept a grant from Cleveland Foundation to place a fellow in the Department of Aging for the Age Friendly Cleveland Plan. Ordinance eight fifty-seven twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request to amend sections thirty-one sixty-seven oh one and oh six and ninety-nine of the codified ordinances relating to floodplain management. Ordinance eight fifty-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Community Development to employ one or more professional consultants to provide grant-writing services, authorizing Director of Community Development to apply for and accept a lead, a lead hazard reduction demonstration grant and the Healthy Homes Grant, both from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts of materials, equipment, supplies, and services necessary to implement the grants and for the rental of furniture and other household articles to supply and accommodate displaced persons. Ordinance eight fifty-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Conwell, Johnson, and Brancatelli by departmental request to amend section five fifty-nine eleven of the codified ordinances to reduce the size of the German Garden and supplemental and codified ordinances by enacting new section five fifty-nine ele- one eleven to designate the Centennial Peace Plaza at ten fifty-one MLK Drive. Ordinance eight ninety-three twenty nineteen by Councilmember Hairston, authorizing and directing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Famico's Foundation to stretch a banner at East Eighty-Eighth and Saint Clair for the period July twenty-sixth to August eleventh twenty nineteen, publicizing the Glenville Festival. Ordinance eight ninety-four twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Bishop, Johnson, Cleveland, Griffin, Polencic, and Conwell, authorizing Director of Department of Public Works to enter into agreement with Poise Entertainment for the Youth Music Education Program through the use of wards two, four, five, six, eight, and nine casino revenue funds. Ordinance eight ninety-five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Joe Jones, Bishop, McCormack, Johnson, Griffin, Hairston, Brady, Brancatelli, Zohn, and Casey, authorizing Director of Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Cleveland Cultural Gardens Federation for the One World Day Centennial Expo through the use of wards one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, and sixteen casino revenue funds. Ordinance eight ninety-six twenty nineteen by Councilmembers McCormack and Bashir Jones, authorizing the issuance of a mobile permit to Julie Nasif Treats on Streets to engage in mobile vending in wards three and seven. Ordinance eight ninety-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmember McCormack to amend section five fifty-one twenty-two of the codified ordinances relating to the waste collection hours near residential dwelling units. to amend Section 551-22 of the codified ordinances relating to the waste collection hours near residential dwelling units.
Complete. All good, Pat? Good with that section? Good for those? Okay. Call the motion to suspend the rules?
Oh, resolution.
Wait, we have to call on, um, emergency charges to be passed. Right?
Yeah. What's happening? Yes.
Okay, so on emergency charges to be passed, please read the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, so I will. Yep. By Councilmember Griffin, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Brady.
Thank you. All council members will please return to their seats for the call of the rule. Sorry, emergency. Got it. This is what we do. This is what... Please call the rule.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Brancatelli, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey Kane, McCormack, Polensic, Santana Zone. Sixteen yays.
Please call the rule on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Brancatelli, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey Kane, McCormack, Polensic, Santana Zone. Sixteen yays, Mr. President.
Thank you. First reading emergency resolutions to be referred for administrative and committee review.
Resolution 862-2019 by Councilmembers Brady, Johnson, and Brancatelli by departmental request, declaring the intent to vacate a portion of the first unnamed alley west of Bel Air Road and north of Guardian Boulevard. Resolution 863-2019 by Councilmembers Cleveland, Johnson, and Brancatelli by departmental request, declaring the intent to vacate a portion of Chata Coin Court, East 59th Place, East 61st Street, and East 63rd Street.
First reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 837-2019 by Councilmember Joe Jones, withdrawing objection to the transfer of ownership of a C1, C2, D6 liquor permit at 471 Lee Road, Unit 290, first floor, and repealing Resolution 332-2019, objecting to said permit. Resolution 838-2019 by Councilmember McCormack, withdrawing objection to the transfer of stock of a D5, D6 liquor permit at 1392 West 6th Street, first and second floors, basement and patio, and repealing Resolution 267-2019, objecting to said transfer. Resolution 839-2019 by Councilmember Cleveland, objecting to the transfer of stock of a C1, C2 liquor permit to 740105 Central Avenue, first floor and basement. Resolution 840-2019 by Councilmember Griffin, objecting to the transfer of liquor license of a C1 liquor permit to 3170 East 91st Street. Resolution 841-2019 by Councilmember Griffin, withdrawing objection to a new C1 liquor permit at 11491 Buckeye Road and repealing Resolution 101-18, objecting to said permit. Resolution 842-2019 by Councilmember Bashir Jones, objecting to the transfer of stock of a D5, D6 liquor permit at 2549 St. Clair Avenue, first floor and basement. Resolution 843-2019 by Councilmember Bashir Jones, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a C2, C2X liquor permit at 1930 East 79th Street, North Unit. Resolution 844-2019 by Councilmember Hairston, objecting to the renewal of a D1, D2, D3, D3A, D6 liquor permit to 1311 East 49th Street, first floor. Resolution 845-2019 by Councilmember Hairston, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a C1, C2 liquor permit to 1287 East 55th Street. Resolution 846-2019 by Councilmember Kelly, objecting to the renewal of a D5 liquor permit at 4488 State Road, first floor and basement. Resolution 847-2019 by Councilmember Santana, objecting to the renewal of a D1, D2 liquor permit at 3203 West 25th Street. Resolution 848-2019 by Councilmember Santana, withdrawing objection to a new C1 liquor permit at 3040 Fulton Road and repealing Resolution 789-18, objecting to said permit. Resolution 849-2019 by Councilmember Santana, withdrawing objection to a new C1 liquor permit at 3545 Ridge Road and repealing Resolution 759-18, objecting to said permit. Resolution 850-2019 by Councilmember Casey, withdrawing objection to a transfer of ownership of a C1, C2, D6 liquor permit at 14120 Lorraine Avenue and repealing Resolution 382-2019, objecting to said permit. Resolution 851-2019 by Councilmember Casey, objecting to the renewal of a D5, D6 liquor permit at 12524 Lorraine Avenue, first floor and basement. Resolution 852-2019 by Councilmember Casey, withdrawing objection to the transfer of ownership of a C1, C2, D6 liquor permit at 15009 Puritus Avenue and repealing Resolution 383-2019, objecting to said permit. Resolution 853-2019 by Councilmember Kane, objecting to the Trex transfer of a D5, D6 liquor permit to 15609-15813 Lorraine Avenue. Resolution 897-2019 by Councilmember Bishop, withdrawing to, I'm sorry, objecting to the renewal of a C2, C2X liquor permit at 4025 East 131st Street. Resolution 898-2019 by Councilmember Bishop, objecting to the renewal of a D2, D2X, D3, D3A liquor permit at 4005-07 East 131st Street and Patio.
Read the motion to suspend the rules?
By Councilmember Griffin, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Brady.
Please call the rule.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Brancatelli, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey Kane, McCormack, Polensic, Santana Zone. Sixteen yays.
Please call the rule on adoption.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Brancatelli, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey Kane, McCormack, Polensic, Santana Zone. Sixteen yays.
Thank you. Second reading emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 512-2019 as amended by Councilmembers Bashir Jones, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to sell city-owned property no longer needed for public use located at the northeast corner of 93rd and Chester to Cleveland Clinic Foundation. Ordinance 637-2019 by Councilmembers Johnson and Kelly by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing, rehabilitating, renovating, replacing, and otherwise improving public facilities, buildings, and other similar structures, including site improvements and appurtenances. Ordinance 638-2019 by Councilmembers Johnson and Kelly by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing, rehabilitating, renovating, replacing, or otherwise improving recreation facilities, ancillary recreation buildings, and other similar structures on city-owned and city-leased park property. Ordinance 680-2019 by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Wadsworth Solutions for labor and materials needed to maintain, repair, and expand the integrated access control security and CCTV systems. Ordinance 679-2019 by Councilmembers Cleveland and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Johnson Controls for labor and materials needed to maintain, repair, and expand the fire alarm and suppression systems. Ordinance 698-2019 by Councilmember McCormack, authorizing the acquisition and recording of certain easement interests from Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works that encroach into existing county public improvements on Vermont Avenue, West 25th, and Detroit. Ordinance 699-2019 as amended by Councilmembers Polensic, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Capital Projects to enter into agreement or agreements with the City of Euclid and City of Euclid for the City of Euclid to design and make the public improvement of rehabilitating East 185th Street from Pawnee Avenue to Lake Erie. Ordinance 701-2019 by Councilmembers McCormack, Johnson, and Brancatelli by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to KND Real Estate Services to encroach into the public right-of-way of 1500 West 3rd Street by installing, using, and maintaining an awning and two sculptures with pedestal foundations. Ordinance 702-2019 by Councilmembers Kelly, Johnson, Brancatelli by departmental request, authorizing Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to the State of Ohio through the Department of Natural Resources Division of Wildlife to encroach into the public right-of-way of Fulton Road by installing, using, and maintaining a peregrine falcon nest tray. Ordinance 706-2019 by Councilmembers Bashir Jones, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request to vacate a portion of East 89th Street. Ordinance 707-2019 by Councilmembers McCormack, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request to vacate a portion of Freeman Avenue Southwest. Ordinance 708-2019 as amended by Councilmembers Kane, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request to vacate a portion of Maplewood Avenue. Ordinance 709-2019 by Councilmembers Hairston, Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request to vacate a portion of Utopia Avenue Northeast. Ordinance 710-2019 by Councilmembers Bashir Jones, Cleveland, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of City Planning to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio History Connection State Historic Preservation Office, Ohio Development Services Agency, to prepare a National Register of Historic Places nomination to recognize and preserve the Midtown Historic District. Ordinance 712-2019 by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the Mayor and the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to acquire and reconvey properties presently owned by Jennings Freeway located at 4781 Hinckley for the purpose of entering into the chain of title prior to the adoption of tax increment financing legislation. Ordinance 713-2019 by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a favorable loan agreement with Jennings Freeway Industrial Park to provide economic development assistance to partially finance the development of a build-to-suit facility at the Strike Force Project Site located at 4781 Hinckley Industrial Parkway. Ordinance 714-2019 by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into an agreement with National Development Council to provide economic development assistance to provide partial funding of the Capital Access Fund of Greater Cleveland. Ordinance 715-2019 by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to apply for and accept grants from Cobank and Farm Credit Mid-America for the Gardening for Greenbacks Program. Ordinance 716-2019 as amended by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a grant agreement with Hebrew Free Loan Association to partially finance the creation of their startup Working Capital Fund Pilot Program, which will be, which will administer working capital financing loans to eligible small businesses located in or will be located in the City of Cleveland. Ordinance 717-2019 by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a grant agreement with Greater Cleveland Media Development Corporation to assist with the general operating expenses of the organization. Ordinance 718-2019 by Councilmembers Brancatelli and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Economic Development to enter into a grant agreement with Greater Cleveland Sports Commission to provide financial assistance to organize and administer programs for the marketing of the City of Cleveland as a venue for sporting events. Ordinance 719-2019 by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Health to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Cities Readiness Initiative Program. Ordinance 720-2019 by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Health to apply for and accept a grant from Cuyahoga County Board of Health for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program. Ordinance 721-2019 by Councilmembers Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Health to enter into one or more contracts without competitive bidding with the Centers for Disease Detection for the purchase of lab services for reproductive health clinics that are needed under Title X Grant. Ordinance 722-2019 as amended by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more agreements with Cleveland Thermal to replace a water distribution main in East 6th Street between Lakeside and Rockwell. Ordinance 723-2019 by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, determining the method of making the public improvement of tearing down and removing the radio tower and associated buildings on the Tree, on the Tree Farm property in Brexville. Ordinance 724-2019 by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of hauling and disposal of water treatment plant residuals for the division of water. Ordinance 725-2019 by Councilmembers Johnson, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to enter into one or more agreements with West Creek Conservancy regarding the Mill Creek Stream Restoration Project at the Cleveland Enterprise Park in the Village of Highland Hills. Ordinance 726-2019 by Councilmembers Johnson and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase, lease, or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles and off-road equipment, apparatus, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes. Ordinance 727-2019 by Councilmembers Johnson and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more written standard purchase and requirement contracts of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles for their authorized and intended purposes. Ordinance 728-2019 by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Finance on behalf of Cleveland Municipal Court to lease property at 1449 West 117th Street for the purpose of providing office space for the Adult Probation Department. Ordinance 746-2019 by Councilmember Zone to amend the title in Section 1 of Ordinance 999-14 and to supplement the ordinance by adding new Sections 4A, B, C, and D to add the sale of property relating to the public improvement of reconstructing West 73rd Street. Ordinance 747-2019 as amended by Councilmembers Griffin, Kelly, McCormack, Cleveland, Polensic, Hairston, Bishop, Zone, and Mayor Jackson to repeal various sections of Chapters 365 and 240 of the codified ordinances and to supplement the codified ordinances by enacting new Sections 365-01 through 09, 240, 01, and 08, and 09, related to rental registration, certain residential rental units required to be certified lead-safe, lead-hazard, and lead-poisoning prevention. Ordinance 749-2019 by Councilmembers Kane and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more contracts with Landmark Lakeshore or its designee to accept the sanitary flow from the shoreline apartments on North Marginal into the city's eight-foot, eight-inch force main and East 50, on East 55th Street.
Read the motion to suspend the rules?
By Councilmember Griffin, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Brady.
Please call the rule.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Brancatelli, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey Kane, McCormack, Polensic, Santana Zone. Sixteen yays.
Thank you. Before we call the rule on passage, comments on, uh, second reading, Rich Jones, Jonathan Brancatelli.
Yeah, uh, please record me as I know for 747-19.
Please call the rule.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Brancatelli, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey Kane, McCormack, Polensic, Santana Zone. Fifteen yays, one nay, on 747-8, uh, 19. All the rest are sixteen.
Thank you. For those in attendance, uh, the process just happened, I believe you're clapping. For those in attendance, the process just happened, I believe you're clapping for the lead paint ordinance passed by the council, by all the council. Okay, thank you all for your hard work on that. Second reading, ordinances to be passed?
Ordinance six forty-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmember Hairston, changing the use, area, and height districts of parcels of land south of Aspen Wall Avenue to Woodward Avenue between East one thirty-fourth and East one fifty-second, and adding an urban form overlay along the major corridors within the neighborhood.
Read the motion to suspend the rules?
By Councilmember Griffin, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember Brady.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, Kane, McCormack, Polencik, Santana, Zone. Sixteen yays.
Call the roll on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, Kane, McCormack, Polencik, Santana, Zone. Sixteen yays, Mr. President.
Thank you. Second reading, emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution six oh five twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Bashir Jones, Zone, and Griffin, declaring the second Monday in October currently observed as Columbus Day as annually, and, I'm sorry, annually as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Cleveland, encouraging other institutions to recognize this day and reaffirming the City's commitment to promote the well-being and growth of Cleveland's Native American and Indigenous communities.
Madam Flirt, do you have the amended, yeah, do you have the amended version?
Thank you. Resolution six oh five twenty nineteen as amended, declaring August ninth annually as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Cleveland, encouraging other institutions to recognize this day and reaffirming the City's commitment to promote the well-being and growth of Cleveland's Native American and Indigenous community. Resolution six sixty-nine twenty nineteen by Councilmembers McCormack, Johnson, and Branca Telly by departmental request, declaring the intent to vacate a portion of West Twenty-Eighth Place. Resolution seven oh four twenty nineteen by Councilmember McCormack, declaring the intent to vacate a portion of the Detroit Superior Viaduct and a portion of Detroit Avenue, and to repeal Resolution eleven thirteen, I'm sorry, eleven thirty eighty. Resolution seven forty-eight twenty nineteen by Councilmembers Griffin, Kelly, McCormack, Cleveland, Polencik, Branca Telly, Bishop, Hairston, Zone, and Mayor Jackson, calling upon health organizations, including hospitals and providers of Medicaid services, to guarantee that Cleveland-area infants and children under age six are screened and tested for lead to help prevent lead poisoning.
Read the motion to suspend the rules?
By Councilmember Griffin, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember Brady.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, Kane, McCormack, Polencik, Santana, Zone. Sixteen yays.
Before we call the roll on passage, there was several members that asked to be added as sponsors to the Indigenous Peoples', six oh five. Councilman Cleveland, Councilman Polencik, anybody else? Okay, please call the roll on adoption. Councilman Santana? Councilman Branca Telly? Councilman Johnson? Is there any obje-, Councilman Hairston, is there any objection to all council members being added? Is that all council members, and please call the roll on adoption.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Branca Telly, I'm sorry, Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, Kane, McCormack, Polencik, Santana, Zone. Sixteen yays.
Thank you. Legislation to be taken.
Ordinance fourteen twenty-three twelve by Councilmembers Branca Telly and Cleveland, changing the use district of land on both sides of East Fifty-Fifth Street from McBride Avenue to Hamlet Avenue to multifamily residential, multifamily residential. Ordinance nine ninety seventeen by Councilmember Jeff Johnson to repeal Sections two forty oh one through oh nine and ninety-nine and Section three sixty-five oh seven of the codified ordinances relating to the lead hazards and lead safe certificates. Ordinance fifteen sixteen, I'm sorry, fifteen eighteen by Councilmembers Branca Telly and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Director of City Planning to consent to assignment of contract as amended from Omni Media Cleveland to Lamar Advertising of Youngstown. Ordinance twenty-two eighteen by Councilmembers Johnson and Kelly by departmental request, authorizing Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to sell city-owned property no longer needed for public use located at the Terminus of Brow Avenue in the Village of Newburgh Heights to the Village of Newburgh Heights for the purposes of redevelopment.
Call the roll on table.
Kelly, Bishop, Brady, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, Kane, McCormack, Polencik, Santana, Zone. Sixteen yays.
Thank you, Madam Flirt. That concludes the legislative agenda of the council. Are there any introductions this evening? Councilman Matt Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make a couple of introductions. First, I'd like to recognize our colleague in public service, Judge Mike Chickenetti. I saw Judge Chickenetti here for a minute. There he is. Thank you, Your Honor, for being here. And I also like to ask all of those who have gathered from the Italian-American community if you would stand and be raised. We welcome you. This is your house. This is your home. Thank you for being here.
Councilman Polencik, Councilman Polencik, do you have your mic up? Councilman Mike Polencik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues. I too want to congratulate and commend members of the Italian community who've shown once again their passion, their love for this city, their belief in their cultural heritage, and I just am always impressed by their commitment to their, to their history, to the community, and beyond, and beyond all, how they believe in the City of Cleveland. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Councilman Bling Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As being the honorary Italian-American that represents the Ward Six area of the City of Cleveland, I would also like to recognize a lot of the constituents that are here from Ward Six in the Italian-American community. So I wanted to also welcome them. As well as, I wanted to make sure that I definitely had to acknowledge my partners. You know, these folks have been with me, and we've had some real tough days, and we've had some long nights and early mornings dealing with this lead safe legislation. And I'd like to ask all of the members of the Lead Safe Coalition if they could please stand. And I also want to acknowledge, I know members of Clash were here too. So I think we have a couple of members left. I see most of them left, but if the Clash members could please stand as well.
Thank you. Are there any more introductions? Are there any announcements? Councilman Zone?
Mr. Chairman, Safety Committee will be meeting August fourteenth, one week before the summer council meeting on August twenty-first. So members of council, put that in your calendar now, and I will send an email at the end of the week.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman Tony Branca Telly.
Yes, thank you. Please note the DPS Committee will be meeting Tuesday, August twentieth, before the council hall.
Thank you. Councilman Kevin Canwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ray Christosse. If I don't recognize him, I won't be able to do my work through little itty.
Is there any miscellaneous? Going one? Councilman Mike Polencik? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't see you. The open, the sunlight behind you. If I go to Councilman McCormick first, then you, Councilman Polencik. Councilman?
You gotta pay attention to your Irish brother over here.
Yes. Great attention. I mean, these, these nice folks in the Italian community, they brought.
That's right. It's hard to see with the good-looking people behind me. I understand that. So, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak briefly on what I believe is a momentous day today for the City of Cleveland and for northeast Ohio. When it comes to addressing a root cause of a problem that we've been talking about for decades in this community and beyond Cleveland, quite frankly, any city in America that has homes that were built before nineteen seventy-eight, we know have the risk of lead paint and lead poisoning in our children. We know that that risk, Mr. President, can lead to severe effects both cognitive, behavioral, and health for our kids. And we know that not based off of science, but we know that in addition to science, off of our own experience in our communities, the stories that we've heard from our neighbors, our community members, and our families about how this problem has affected each and every community that we represent. So through all that, Mr. President, today we pass legislation, bold legislation, to take a real step towards addressing the lead paint poisoning issue in the City of Cleveland. And I really want to spend a couple of seconds here thanking folks that were deeply involved in that, all council members that were involved in that process. Specifically, Councilman Griffin, our honorary Italian, who is, you know, really led us in the Health and Human Services Committee on spearheading this legislation. The Councilman Griffin is a genuine person, really, honestly, cares about the work done and ensures the right thing is done. He's not just about politics. He wants to do something to make a real impact. So I want to congratulate him. Mr. President, your leadership in our caucus and in our council ensured that this process moved along. Really want to point you out for steering the ship on that. And then Mayor Jackson.